Good evening and welcome to the October 6, 2014 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Fleming lead us in the invocation, so if you would please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you this evening so blessed to be in such a wonderful country, Father, with all the freedoms that we have, Father. We just thank you for this city that we live in, Father, and we just thank you for each person that works in the city, the firemen, the policemen, Father. Just keep them safe as they go about doing their duties, Lord, and keeping this one of the safest cities in the country, Lord. Father, we just have so many blessings. We just ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight, Father, that business will be conducted in a manner that's pleasing to you. These things we pray in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bitner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
All present. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 this evening is a presentation to the city and the city council by Saleh Ozdemir, the Niagara Foundation Executive Director, and Tolga Salek, the president of the Turkish American Society of Michigan, the TASM. And last week, both of these gentlemen came to the city hall and presented myself and city manager Kishnik with these beautiful calligraphy that was designed and hand-printed by a world-renowned calligraphist, and it was presented at us by the Turkish American Society of Michigan, and it has the city of Troy obviously as the head on this, has the mayor's name on here, and all city council members. And a special thank you to them for doing this for us and presenting it to us, and we are going to hang it in the council chambers here. I will pass it to the council members so they can take a look at it. It's just a beautiful piece of art. And I'm going to walk over and give this one to city manager Kishnik, and he can thank them for this particular one.
There's an absence that needs to be excused from the special meeting.
Okay, thank you. City Mayor Kishnik, did you want to say anything at this point, or have I said a special thank you to them for making those presentations to us?
Special thank you to both of the gentlemen who have come and have taken the time to honor the city of Troy and the people who work there. Oh, this is great. Great timing.
This is perfect timing. We just mentioned your name and showed the audience the special gifts that you gave to us. Would you come forward to the podiums, please?
Sorry, you're late. I hope you're not late.
You're perfect, perfect timing.
Okay.
I already introduced both of you, but if you could just come to the microphone and introduce yourself and...
Here.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for accepting us, by the way. My name is Saleh Ozdemir, the Executive Director of the Niagara Foundation, and my colleague is here, Mr. Tolga. He's the president of the Turkish American Society of Michigan. We are actually a neighbor of yours. We are just maybe a mile away from here on the Big Beaver Road.
And I'm living here.
Yeah, he's living here. So let me mention about our organizations just a little bit since...
Please.
You told us that, you know, we have only to speak like five minutes, for five minutes.
Please.
I don't know how I can explain my organization or his organization in five minutes, but I'll try. So Niagara Foundation is an interfaith and intercultural dialogue organization. We are basically located, our headquarters is actually located in Chicago. We are basically Midwest organization. What we are trying to do is to bring the people from different ethnic regions or religious groups, or, you know, different walks of life, to make the bridges between the cultures and communities. Also, Turkish American Society of Michigan also helps us to do some of the activities. Just to give you an example, the Children's Festival that we do annually, every year. Last year, for instance, we organized this Children's Festival in Troy in Athens High School, and I'm hoping we're going to do this at the same place. And we are very proud of, you know, organizing this fantastic event, five years, five years in a row, I guess. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Also, we actually had a guest just last year, all the way, he came all the way from Turkey. He's an artist and master of the calligraphy, and we specifically requested him to write your name. I don't know if you showed them already, but yeah, that was fantastic job that he has done when he visited the city here. So thank you again for, you know, honoring us today.
Well, thank you for honoring us with this wonderful piece of art. I know he's world-renowned, and it was a special, special day when he was here last year, and he did some things for staff and myself, and it's just incredible what he can do. And the Children's Festival is something that is very dear to the city of Troy. We look forward to being a partner again this year with the festival, and we thank you for being a part of our community and everything that you do for us, and a special thanks for the, for the gifts that you brought for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And also, thank you, especially in Turkey, you know, the holiday.
Yeah, we have religious holiday, all, you know, in the country and in the Muslim world, actually, what we call sacrifice holiday, or in Arabic, Eda, Ahha. So actually, he was, just came from the Turkey, and he brought a very famous sweet, which is called Turkish Delight. It's known as the Turkish Delight. I think he's ready to give you some for, you know, tasting. I don't know, hopefully you'll like, just try, please.
When we saw you last week, you brought some for us, and I took it home and...
Yes, how was it?
We don't have any left, I know that.
Okay.
Go ahead, let them taste.
These came all the way from Turkey.
And as the Niagara Foundation, by the way, we also organize trip to Turkey, especially in the summertime, and we will be very happy if you can join one of the trip that we are going to organize this summer. So we are working with the Mr. Slater and Mr. Kishnik about this. So if you have time, please join us, but we will talk about the trip and details later.
Very good. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you so much for, for your time and accepting us.
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. Okay, at this point, I'm going to go back and move the resolution to Detroit City Council hereby excuses the absence of councilmember Teetz at the special city council meeting of September 29, 2014, due to being out of the county. Support. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Fleming that we excuse the absence of Councilman Teetz from the special city council meeting of September 29, 2014. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will move to C2, which is the Transit Center grand opening for October the 14th, 2014, at 9:30 a.m. And this is a very exciting announcement for the city of Troy. We have put out a press release, and I won't read the entire press release, but I will announce that the city of Troy will celebrate the grand opening of the Troy multimodal Transit Center with an official ribbon-cutting ceremony. The event will take place Tuesday, October 14, 2014, with refreshments at 9 a.m. and the official ceremony at 9:30 a.m. The event is open to the public, and the Transit Center, located at 1201 Doyle Drive, will begin its regular schedule that day. So we look forward to having everyone there for this special and long-awaited event, and we will talk more at the grand opening. There are no carryover items, no public hearings this evening. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, so we will not have any response to those comments this evening. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I1, board and committee appointments. I will move the appointment of the following nominated persons to serve on the Downtown Development Authority. Ward Randall Jr. for the term that expires 9:30, 2018. Ernest Reske for the term to also expire 9:30, 2018. And Douglas Schroeder for the term that expires 9:30, 2018. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we hereby appoint Ward Randall, Ernest Reske, Douglas Schroeder to the Downtown Development Authority for terms that expire 9:30, 2018. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations to those gentlemen. I will give the microphone to Mayor Protem Henderson for city council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. For the Animal Control Appeal Board, Jane Sager for a term expiring 9:30, 2017, and Steve Toth for a term expiring 9:30, 2017. And the Parks and Rec Board, Janice Zakakis for a term expiring 9:30, 2017.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we appoint Jane Sager and Steve Toth to the Animal Control Appeal Board for the terms to expire 9:30, 2017, and Janice Zakakis to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term to also expire 9:30, 2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations to those new members. I2 is the board and committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations this evening. I will give the microphone to Mayor Protem Henderson for city council nominations.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to resolve to nominate to the Parks and Rec Board Timothy McGee for a term expiring 9:30, 2017.
Support. Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate for the Parks and Recreation Board Timothy McGee for the term that expires 9:30, 2017. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. There is no closed session request this evening, so I4 is the standard purchasing resolution two, a low bidder meeting specifications for fencing for I-75 under the overpass with an introduction by Kurt Bovensee, the Public Works Manager. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The fencing underneath the I-75 overpass here at Big Beaver is in, is in disarray. During our discussions on, on the walkability or moving pedestrian traffic throughout the Big Beaver corridor, it was identified that in order to get people to walk, they have to be invited to walk, and it has to have an inviting appeal to it. So one of the things that we recognized upfront was the fencing underneath the I-75 overpass was not inviting at all. During that discussion, Jim Schultz from Michigan Department of Transportation was in with that discussion, and he said, "We want to be a partner, and the best way to be a partner is come to the table with money." So MDOT is, is giving a 50 percent grant for the fencing, a 50 percent matching grant for the fencing, along with some other things that went along with the Big Beaver Symposium, and next month to come, tree planting along the right-of-way, in MDOT's right-of-way and along Big Beaver where there isn't any.
Thank you. Any questions for Kurt? Thank you, Kurt. Should be noted that a yellow paper was put on our desk this evening for I-4 with a slight typo right under the purchasing portion of the, of the paper. So if the motion is moved and supported, it would be for the yellow paper that's on the table.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Henderson.
I'll move I-4 as printed in the yellow.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Hoderek, that we award the contract to furnish and install new fencing on Big Beaver under the I-75 overpass as printed on the yellow sheet at the council table. Discussion.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoderek.
For anyone who's maybe connecting with the, with this discussion or idea for the first time, maybe watching tonight, if you walk, can take a walk, come to city hall and park and try to take a walk under that overpass and take a look, you will see what it is that is in disrepair and how desperately we need to take care of it. It will not only encourage walking, but we do have people walking. There are more and more pedestrians that are, and it's an eyesore there when you do walk under it. It's, so it's exciting that we have a partner coming to us with money to help, and I'm appreciating the study that we did as, as a group, and would invite anybody who's wondering what we're talking about here to go take a look, and you'll see what a positive thing this will be for our Big Beaver corridor.
Well said. I have told several people that I think we were asked to do that walk on purpose so we could see exactly how bad it was, and I have to tell you, it was embarrassing for me to walk along Big Beaver and under I-75. And I know city manager Kishnik, it's on the top of agenda now to make sure that we clean that up, so I thank you for that. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone at the council table wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Fleming?
Yes, I move the resolution resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Councilman Fleming, supported by Councilman Campbell, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented and printed on the yellow sheets that are on the council table. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
All consent agenda items have passed this evening. If you are here for one of those items, they were passed. Next is memorandums and future council agenda items. There is an announcement for a public hearing, November 10, 2014, for Industrial Development District and IDD and industrial facilities exemption certificate, which is an IFEC for Toyota, Gashi, N.A. Corporation at 1400 Stevenson. There are no memorandums submitted by city council, so we will move to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I will first call on David Zouza, Troy resident. Good evening, David.
Mayor Slater, council members, city staff, and guests. Good evening. My name is David Zouza. I am the director of fund development for the Troy Historic Village. A little over three years ago, the Troy Historical Society assumed operational responsibilities for the village from the city of Troy. The village continues to operate successfully as we execute our strategic plan to be a critically important cultural resource for Troy and the region. The reality we face is ongoing financial challenges. We appreciate the operational funding support from the city, but it represents less than 20 percent of our total operating budget. The balance of our revenues comes from program fees, and most importantly, from financial donations by individuals, organizations, and businesses in the area. They recognize the value of investing in the village to fulfill our mission to preserve our community's unique and rich heritage, educate our youth and adult visitors, reinforce our community's identity through our heritage, and contribute to our community's economic development by attracting visitors from our region. Fundraising is critically important for the Troy Historic Village. We are having a fun and creative event to raise funds for the village called the Scarecrow Glow. This is a costume optional party that will take place on Wednesday, October 22, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the village. Tickets are $40 per person in advance and $50 on the day of the event. Guests will enjoy great food and drink at no extra cost from our partners, Ruth Chris Steakhouse, Kona Grill, Granite City Food and Brewery, Northern Lake Seafood, Fieldstone Winery, Aket's Pies, Zoya Yogurt, and the Mad Hatter Tea Bistro in Birmingham. In addition, guests will be entertained by live bluegrass and jazz music, be able to make smores, and witness a live blacksmithing demonstration in our wagon shop. Our theme this year is Alice in Wonderland. Oh, boy. Nice. As the Mad Hatter, I encourage each of you to purchase a ticket for yourself and your spouse or significant other, invite your friends, family members, and business colleagues to attend, and be prepared to enjoy a wonderful evening that benefits the village. Please join me, the Queen of Hearts, the White Rabbit, and other adorable characters from Alice in Wonderland, as we celebrate the enchanting Troy Historic Village on October 22. You can purchase your tickets on our website at troyhistoricvillage.org or call us at 248-524-3570. Don't be late for a very important date. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Well done. Well done. Took a lot of courage to wear that hat.
And thank you for our handouts for the Scarecrow Glow and for the village press. I'll be there.
Next, I will call on James Savage, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council staff. I guess as many of you know, and a couple of you have been to these events, second Thursday of every month, I host a dance at the Troy Community Center. I promote this event not just as a dance, but as a community social event. It also serves to promote our community center, which has one of the finest ballrooms in the area. The admission is $6 for residents, $7 for non-residents. We are hoping to attract young people by offering a high school student amount of $3 and is pay at the door. Light refreshments are served, thanks to American House. This Thursday, the hall will be decorated with flowers courtesy of Tellis Garden Center. We are trying to involve our local small businesses, and we've been quite successful at that. So for an evening of good music, good company, and good coffee and refreshments from 7:00 to 9:30, for $6, it is such a deal. Whether you dance or not, just join us this Thursday. There will be no politics. I'd like to, we're then go on camera, and that is the flyers are in, at the desk by the city parks office. Also, as an afterthought, I was thinking, you know, this is probably where I came into the picture, in Troy. Many years ago, I was helping the Troy Windsor Scottish Club organize a Lord Mayor's banquet, and they had the Lord Mayor of Coventry, the Mayor of German City, and different mayors. And so they says, well, you know, it'd be nice if we could get somebody from the States. Well, at that time, Jeanie Stein had just been elected mayor, so you can imagine it goes back a long way. So they invited her, and that was my first involvement with Troy City Council, and incidentally, Jeanie Stein's speech was the highlight of the evening. It went over so well. Since then, she attended another dance at the, or banquet at the Commonwealth Club. So if, if Jeanie is watching, I hope you remember this. And if I have caused anybody any aggravation over the years, you better blame Jeanie Stein. Thank you. We would like to see as many people as possible, make this a, a social event, and if we're gonna, we're doing well enough, we're gonna keep going anyhow, but with your help, we will do a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we can get Councilwoman Hoderek to return and dance. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Are there any comments this evening from council?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderek.
I do plan to return to dance, and I must say, Mr. Savage is mighty smooth on the dance floor. It's one of the many wonderful events, and it's nice to see people coming to the microphone talking about the things that are building community in Troy. Appreciate it, and I'm excited about the historical museum event, too. The more we can get behind these activities, the more people of multiple ages are enjoying the many gems in Troy, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Oh, she must want to speak.
No, we will get to you. I just want one thing to say. Special thanks to Maxine and Stuart, and they know why we're saying thank you this evening, so just a special thank you to, to them this evening. Next, we will do public comment for items not on the agenda from... Next, we will do public comment for items not on the agenda from... Nope. We're going to do reports next, and then we'll get to that. Anyone wish to have a comment on the reports this evening? Councilman Pennington?
Oh, yeah. I was wondering if we could get Mr. Kishnik to count, to comment on O... Which report was that?
O-3C?
O-3C.
I know he's looking for that, but...
I'd love to comment on it, but this is something that the police department does. So if the police chief is here, if you'd like a report from him. The good news is, the amount of money that was raised for Troy Youth Assistance was $3,300, and Troy Community Coalition, the same amount. I had very little to do with this. They made that, they made me do that. But I must say, I was glad to see that golf outing in Troy and at a Troy golf course, being used on an off day.
Just wanted to bring that up. It went to a good cause.
It went to a good cause. Those are three wonderful 503-C charities that are so important to our community. I think really what City Councilmember Pennington was looking for is who actually did win that golf outing.
Oh, Mayor, I did not hear that question. I'm sorry.
Okay. Next, we will move to comments on items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. So I will call on Karen Geibl to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council and staff members. My name is Karen Geibl, and I'm a candidate for the open seat in the Sixth Circuit Court this year. You're going to see a lot of signs going up in the county for election time, and mine will be one. So I'm just here to introduce myself to the city council members, let you know a face, put a face to a name. Again, I'm a proud resident of Oakland County. I'm also a 14-year employee at the Oakland County Circuit Court. I am a judicial staff attorney for Judge Rudy Nichols. I've been at the court for 14 years. My role as a judicial staff attorney is not that different from that of a judge. Every day, I research the law, write the opinions, make recommendations on motions, meet with attorneys, I meet with clients. Every day, we're resolving conflict in our court. So I feel like I've been training for this for a long time. It's not very often that there's an open seat in the circuit court, so I figure it's time to take my career to the next level. So I'm here to answer any questions, if anybody has any about the circuit court. Most people don't get there. Most people don't know who to vote for when it comes to judge. But you may be called for jury duty sometimes, and that's where it would be, 1,200 North Telegraph Building. So any questions?
This is not a format that we have in interaction with the speakers.
Okay.
We just look for comments from the audience at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to introduce myself, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak this evening. If somebody else signed up, it did not register on our kiosk, so... I'm going to ask to... I will move that we amend the rules and regulations to allow the lady to speak this evening. Support. Moved by the Chair and supported by Mayor Protem Henderson, that we amend the rules. We have a discussion on that. Give a vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Please come forward and give us your name. The rules are...
Sorry about that, because we both helped each other through the computer out there. I kind of feel like roadkill on the super information highway.
Somehow it didn't make it, but that's okay.
Thanks. So anyways, my name's Eileen Hill. I'm resident of Troy. I'm also a fitness instructor at the community center. I teach about nine classes a week there. Anyways, I just wanted to point something out to you. One, I hope this pledge of allegiance and the prayer never leaves this table. Anyways, I wonder, since you have found the means to like cement every street in this city over the last few weeks, you can't get anywhere, if you would consider looking at either a bike or running trail along Beach Road. I don't know if it's been looked at before, but I was out Sunday. I did a long 12-mile, and the road there has a lot of bikes, a lot of walkers on it, a lot of runners along there, and it's horrible with the cars, and they go up over hills. So maybe they could find the means to just save a little bit of cement and put like a 12-inch patch along the side of that road on the shoulder somewhere. I don't know if it's ever been looked at, but it's highly used by fitness people, and it's really kind of dangerous along there. It's really the only wooded area we have to run in Troy that's kind of like being in the country. So if you could just look at that, that'd be great. It's hard sometimes to get through this city, either on a bike or running, without a GPS on you, because there's always just that one little link road that hooks up the subdivisions to each other, so it's really hard. With Beach Road, you can run out and you can come back. Anyways, thanks very much. I just wanted to let you know that. And then also, one other thing, that I'm just going to leave some pictures. I opened the paper the other day on the new hospital coming to town, and I pulled up some old minutes to a meeting, and I remember about maybe five or six years ago, IKEA wanted to move to town, and they were looking over by Automation Alley, and this, not you on here, but the board that was here, turned them down because they didn't like the colors of the building. They had put that as a consensus, and I really don't see much difference. I'll put these pictures in. Of IKEA and that hospital's going in. I'm just worried with those colors. It's like nestled right between an upscale motel and a hotel and our beautiful community center and our city complex in there, and you're going to have like a Kleenex box of all these colors in there. When they show it on the picture, it's shown with the vast spans around it, and you're going to have it really crammed in there. So I'm just worried about what that's going to look like. But I thought those pictures were very interesting. So thanks for hearing me out, and please consider that bike or running trail along Beach Road. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you. I know that we don't have any comment after this particular item, but it's always been a false rumor that IKEA got turned down because of the colors. And we do have a plan for bike paths and trails in Troy that is one of our major items that we're looking at now, so we are visiting that, too. And as far as the colors on the hospital, it's a children's hospital. I think it's just wonderful that we're going to have so many colors for the children. There are no study items this evening, no closed session, so we are adjourned.